I'm turning to it.
I can't get it, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll make the nomination of George Butterfly.
George Butterfly, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's crazy, it's not coming out.
Court of adjustment?
Again, forgive me.
They've known me all this time. Okay, Ms. Counsel.
I'd like to nominate Vicki Mullins, Joseph Dykes, and Alonzo Ferguson, Senior.
Okay, any other nominations? All right, that moves to appointments.
Let me skip one. Yeah, I know you did, I was on number five, yeah.
We're on number five, the appointment of the ABC Board Chairman. It's a motion to approve Mr. Johnson Chestnut as the Chairman.
So moved.
There's been a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Adams.
You know, Mr. Chair, and it's not against the appointment of Johnson Chestnut, but in my reviewing, it looks like he's been the Chairman for the last couple of years. And just as this board rotates his Chairman, I think that, who's the, I don't know who the liaison is to, who's the liaison today? You know, I would just encourage our boards and commissions to allow everybody an opportunity, if we appoint them, to be able to have the opportunity to serve as some of the Chairs and Vice Chairs of some of these boards and commissions. So that's just what I put on the table. I don't have anything as to the appointment of this, and no opposition to it.
This is directed to me. It's entirely up to that board to suggest who their Chairman is. So, you know, we have absolutely nothing to do with that.
And I understand.
Except we can approve it or disapprove it.
No, no, I'm not, it's not an issue of approving or disapproving. I think that, and maybe we take it to the policy, is just an encouragement to our boards and commissions to kind of, you know, everybody, those boards, each one of those boards have the ability to choose who their Chairman is. We don't have that, we're just a liaison. But I think that if we send a signal from here that we encourage that everybody be given that opportunity to serve, because I think on this board, everybody wants that opportunity to serve. And it's not singling out the ABC Board, it's just my opportunity to bring that up as it's on the agenda.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to, I believe, is that correct?
Correct.
To approve the Johnson Chestnut as Chairman of the ABC Board. If there's no further discussion, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Mr. Faircloth, item 6A.
Mr. Chairman, for item 6A, the appointment of the Cumberland County Juvenile Crime Council, the nominee is an at-large representative. At this time, I would move that we approve the appointment of Detective Melton Brown as a reappointment to that position.
Your second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Item B is an appointment to the Board of Trustees. We have one vacancy, we have two nominees. Does anyone wish to pull any nominee? All those in favor of Paul Crenshaw?
Voting in favor of Mr. Crenshaw, Commissioners Evans, Keith, and Adams.
Okay, all in favor of Mr. Linwood Powell?
Voting in favor of Mr. Powell, Commissioners Lancaster, Faircloth, Chairman Edge, and Commissioner Counsel.
All right, thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Powell. The next item is closed session for attorney-client matter.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Two matters.
Two matters, well, I think the second one now most probably characterized as a personnel matter.
Okay.
So moved.
All right, move, we go in second. All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Board.
The Board of County Commissioners approved the fiscal year 2016 budget on June 8th. County Manager Amy Cannon is here to tell us about the budget and some of the initiatives for the new fiscal year.
The adopted budget for fiscal year 2016 totals countywide $526 million. The general fund total is $319.4 million, which represents an increase of $4.5 million or 1.4% from last year's adopted budget. The tax rate to support this adopted budget remains at 74 cents per hundred, and one penny on the tax rate will generate $2.2 million in revenue. I'd like to share some of our revenue assumptions that were included in this adopted budget. Ad valorem taxes, as you know, makes up about forty, 54% of total revenue in the general fund. Ad valorem taxes are budgeted at $168 million. We've projected natural growth in our tax base of $3.2 million or 2%. Motor vehicles, under the Tax and Tag Together initiative, totals $15.7 million in the adopted budget. Fortunately, our sales tax has rebounded from last year when it declined due to sequestration and the federal budget furloughs. Sales tax makes up over 12% of the total revenue in the general fund. This year, we've projected an increase of $2.2 million for a total sales tax budget of $39 million. In addition, we have appropriated approximately $7.9 million of our fund balance or our savings account. As you know, Cumberland County, our state, and our nation have faced unprecedented economic challenges. Increased demand for services and increased operating costs continue to outweigh available revenue. We still face many uncertainties. Uncertainties in our local revenue stream, General Assembly action, military troop strength, and federal spending. This adopted budget has been developed to support the Board's strategic goals and objectives to maintain our core services and also to honor the fiscal policies previously adopted by the Board of Commissioners. Most importantly, this budget was based on the question of financial sustainability in the future. Our challenge is to match increased demand in services with the goal of providing our citizens with excellent customer service and balancing that with financial sustainability in the future. Our focus in allocating our resources in this budget year was first, to allocate funding in support of the strategic plan. Continue our rich mission here in Cumberland County of providing quality services but also being fiscally responsible. In addition, we attempted to address some of the increased demands in services. And also, most importantly, we allocated funding to the extent that we considered it financially sustainable in the future. We developed four funding priorities this year. Investment in our workforce, customer service, infrastructure repairs and maintenance, and technology. Our first funding priority is in the area of our workforce. Our county employees are the county's greatest resource, and as such, we've included $2.3 million for a 3% cost of living increase for our county employees. This was a top priority that was established by the Board of Commissioners many months ago. Our continued emphasis on employee wellness further demonstrates our commitment to our county employees. Wellness programs are a strategic investment in that it improves the overall well-being of our employees. We've continued to develop creative programs that may bring about positive lifestyle changes. The bottom line is that the welfare of our employees continues to have an impact on the county's success in the future. I believe that our goal should be for our county employees to be a model or a catalyst for the community of positive lifestyle changes. Our second priority is customer service, and as such, we have appropriated $100,000 for homelessness. This was an initiative or a top priority identified by the Board of County Commissioners and also the City Council. As such, we'll partner with the city, and we will address this issue appropriately as a community issue. We began this coordinated effort in May with an informational meeting for the City Council and the Board of Commissioners. That meeting revealed a need for a position to coordinate the many, many resources that are already available in our community for the homeless population. In addition, we need to identify the additional needs of this population and also work on resource referral. In the long term, we need to develop coordinated case management and consider the establishment of an intake center. The bottom line is that we need to develop a plan or a strategy for the homeless population. A second part of our customer service includes 15 new positions that have been funded in this adopted budget. All of these positions have been added due to increasing demands in customer service that cannot be addressed in another fashion. Eight of these 15 new positions are related to public service. Four are in the 911 call center, and four are also new detectives for our Sheriff's Office. Last year, we set a goal of proactively funding and maintaining our county infrastructure. We procured professional evaluations for our parking lots, our roof systems, and the building envelopes. This professional evaluation identified a long-term, multi-year need of repairs in the amount of $9.7 million. In the first year alone, $3.6 million of needs have been identified. To give you some perspective, the county embarked on a building replacement and renovation program from 2000 to 2014. During this period of time, the operating cost for Cumberland County increased over $15 million due to these major building renovations or replacement. Based on the significant dollars that have been identified in these multi-level evaluations, we have recommended an installment financing to fund the first three years of this program to place ourselves in a position of being able to catch up on these much-needed repairs and maintenance. I believe our focus needs to be on maintaining our infrastructure, and any new building or renovation project should be delayed and should be further programmed into our multi-year CIP document. Our final funding priority is in the area of technology. Over $800,000 has been appropriated for computer network upgrades, software, the final phase of our phone transition to voice-over internet protocol, and also to replace computers in several departments, including the self-service terminals that are used throughout our library system. Finally, I'd like to tell you about some of our ongoing technology solutions. First of all, in the area of document imaging. This has been a multi-year project to implement document imaging in our Department of Social Services, Child Support, and Veteran Services. This first phase will be complete in December of 2015. Our second major software conversion is conversion of our finance, human resource, and benefits software. We just had a major kickoff in May to begin this 18 to 24-month transition. Both of these software packages will create operational efficiencies. It should reduce our reliance on paper and reduce redundancy, but also enhance customer service to our citizens. Finally, I'd like to tell you about a new division that's been created in our Department of Information Services. It's called our Enterprise Solution Division. This new division has been created to review the business processes in the new document imaging software and our finance and HR software. The goal is to make sure that our business processes are appropriately aligned to achieve the operational efficiencies inherent in these new software technologies. Other budget highlights in the area of education. This year, we increased the funding to our Board of Education $911,000 for a total current expense budget of $77.8 million. In addition, funding to Fayetteville Technical Community College has increased this year almost a half a million dollars for a total funding of $10.1 million. Other budget considerations include discussion regarding our solid waste enterprise fund. We've appropriated $8 million to construct landfill sales number nine and 10. In addition, we've appropriated $4.6 million to close some of our earlier sales, sales one and two and three. Over the course of the next year, we recommend that we begin a review of our $48 landfill fee. This fee was established in the early 90s. Since that time, operational costs have increased dramatically. Over the course of time, our landfill is going to struggle to maintain operations on a fee that was established over 20 years ago. Last year, I ended the budget presentation with this conclusion about our philosophy moving forward. Our philosophy should be to define our core functions, to develop a more efficient organization, and to emphasize technology as a way to provide excellent customer service. We need to review our operations and develop solutions to streamline our service delivery. That philosophy holds true today, and I believe our pathway to streamlining our organization is through business intelligence. This is not a new term. Business intelligence is simply this. It's the tools and techniques used to review data, to identify and develop and create new business opportunities. Business intelligence will help us to maximize our existing resources, to address those gaps in customer service, and to begin to be able to respond to increased demand for services without always adding new positions. Business intelligence provides the objective approach that we need to review our business processes to help us to work smarter and create these efficiencies. Earlier in the presentation, I talked about the Enterprise Solution Division, and I said that that division was created mainly to look at the business processes aligned in the document imaging and financial and human resources software. During this adopted budget process, we actually added two new positions to expand that focus beyond the business processes related to those technologies. Again, we believe that reviewing all of our county business processes is critical in the, in streamlining our operation. I believe that we can create a partnership between this new division and all county departments through a commitment and a buy-in to provide excellent customer service by creating efficiencies. In addition, under the business intelligence model, we plan to create a six-member business intelligence committee that will review all the recommendations from our Enterprise Solutions Division. Those recommendations will then be reported to the Finance Committee of the Board of County Commissioners. Once again, this budget has a one-year funding focus, but I would ask you to look at this from a broader context and look into the future. Financial sustainability does continue to pose a challenge as our revenue environment remains very constrained. We're continually faced with an increased demand for services. I believe our path to financial sustainability and providing excellent customer service is embracing the business intelligence methodology and to begin to look at our business processes to create internal efficiencies that make us a stronger organization. The mission of Cumberland County Government is to provide our citizens with excellent customer service through our core values of professionalism, respect, integrity, and diversity. We should never lose sight that customer service is at the heart of what we do each and every day and who we are.
The Cumberland County Register of Deeds office and community partners conduct a school supply drive every summer to provide learning materials for homeless schoolchildren. Register of Deeds Lee Warren talks about how the giving spirit of individuals, businesses, groups, and churches can help hundreds of needy children.
The school supply drive came to our attention probably five or six years ago. One of the Fayetteville Police Department's, the homeless officer, Officer Stacy Sanders, presented a program at one of the local churches, and one of our staff members was in attendance and came in the next Monday morning and told us about all of the homeless children in the Cumberland County schools. And we had a staff meeting and we're talking about that, and we were just thinking, how could there be homeless children in the Cumberland County schools? And, and at that time, there were about 800. This past year, that number moved down to about 650, and we're hoping this year the number moves down to 600. Our office starts collecting school supplies around the summertime, June, July, very early August. The book bags have to be all put together and prepared and delivered somewhere about the 15th of August. We want to do that prior to the beginning of school, and, uh, we have our book drive that really is in full force during July. You know, when you think about homeless children and the difficulties they must face when it's time to start school, and they don't have all of the things that the other children may have, the new tennis shoes, the, uh, the latest fashion, all of that, or even school supplies. And so what we do is we get a neon mesh bag in a variety of, of colors, and we fill those with school supplies. We put in them notebooks, loose leaf binders, notebook paper, colored pencils, crayons, pencils, pencil sharpeners, rulers. Also, you know, when you think of homeless children, there may need, uh, may need to be some personal hygiene items that they may need too. So, uh, we give toothbrushes and toothpaste and floss and hand sanitizer, all of those things, so that when those children are in the first week of school, that they shouldn't feel ashamed that they don't have some of the things that the other children have. Our Register of Deeds office with a staff of 24, we can't undertake a project like this by ourselves. We need some help, and we need plenty of help from the community, and we have had a lot of help. We coordinate this effort through the Fayetteville Police Department and the Cumberland County School Systems, and, um, we have a number of community partners that have helped us for a number of years, and we just could not do this project without them. The Fayetteville Regional Association of Realtors, they have contributed greatly over the last three or four years. They have, they're, they're very kind. They, they actually buy all of the bags for us, the neon mesh bags. And the reason we went with that type of bag is the school system said that they would prefer that bag over a solid bag that they couldn't see through. This way, they could see in the bag and make sure that everything in there is, um, what needs to be at school. And so the Fayetteville Regional Association of Realtors has helped us. At their annual, not annual, but at their monthly meeting that they have, uh, they collect, uh, school supplies, and they make a generous donation buying the bags. Also, we have had a lot of help and support with Beasley Broadcast, WKML Radio, to be exact. They have helped promote this project for many years. Also, the Walmart stores are very good about donating, um, to this project. Various dental offices in the area, the Pope Dental Clinic, and a lot of the, the dental clinics and dental offices in the area have been very good about supplying floss and toothbrushes and toothbrush holders and, um, toothpaste and those types of items. Also, Brian Honda has been a very, very big supporter of our project. We have, um, dozens of others, and I'd get in a lot of trouble if I left somebody out, but, uh, we couldn't do this project without the help of a lot of, lot of people. And so if you have an item or items that you'd like to donate, you could call our office. The number is 910-678-7775. That's at the Register of Deeds office. We're on the first floor, the Cumberland County Courthouse. You could call, arrange to drop off your items. We could meet you out in the, uh, in the parking lot, so you don't have to worry about trying to get them inside or anything like that. Anything that you could, would like to donate would be wonderful. We use composition books, loose leaf notebooks, uh, we use notebook paper, pencils, colored pencils, crayons, markers, rulers, uh, pencils, hand sanitizer, all of those kinds of things. Anything that a child might, would need, that you would buy your child or grandchild to go to school, these children need that as well. So we would be glad to coordinate that effort. Or you may simply, uh, wish to just donate a gift card. That would work wonderfully well as, as well, because what we have to do is, um, our, the 3rd of August is our cutoff date for us gathering supplies. Then we have to inventory what we have, make sure that we have the quantities that we need of every item, and if we're short of something, then we have to go out and, and purchase that to make sure that we have the right quantities. Last year, we did, um, about 650 bags for the school system. We're expecting that number this year to be somewhere between 600 and 650. We also provide, uh, 100 bags, book bags for the homeless stand-down that is put on by the Fayetteville Police Department in Festival Park, and so there are children there. We donated 100 book bags for that project as well. And also, the Highlands Chapter of the American Red Cross, whenever there's a fire, um, that might not be coordinated with time for school to start, but it may be in, um, October or January or whenever, whenever there's an apartment fire and children lose things, then we also donated about 50 book bags to the Highlands Chapter of the American Red Cross as well. So, we did about 800 bags this past year with the help of a lot of good folks in this community, and that...